Twenty twenty three, um, regular meeting back out of executive session and into regular session. Is there, has everyone had a chance to review on the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Jen. Is there a second? Thank you, Laura. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Um, comments from the public. The board has set a time at the beginning and end of regular meetings for public comments for members of the public to share their views on matters involving the Wilton Public Schools. And to help inform the board's decisions on such matters. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of fifteen minutes to any one subject. For the record, please also give your name and address. The board considers the views of citizens in deliberations and welcomes and appreciates public comment. The board listens to public comment thoughtfully and with interest. The board, however, generally does not respond to public comment during board meetings by offering commentary or answering questions. The board also invites commentators and the public to contact the board or the superintendent directly with any specific questions or comments. Is there anyone for a public comment? Thank you. And consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jen. Is there a second? Thank you, Nicole. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Um, board chose report. Um, just brief, good evening. Um, I just want to thank all who participated in the budget process and voted. And the budget has passed and the district can now plan for next year with certainty. Um, we are coming to the close of another amazing year for the Wilton Public Schools. This morning, I attended the Wilton High School Awards Assembly. I was honored to present the Cabe Award and to be in a room full of talent and promise. Thank you, Principal O'Donnell and Principal Assistant Principal Keating for facilitating the presentation. It was really phenomenal. I think that it's only fitting for the board to write a year in review and a thank you to all who make our schools a success. So with the board's permission, I'd like to draft a letter for review, um, for discussion and approval at our June first meeting. Superintendent.
Great. So I'll pick up kind of where you left off with the congratulations. Um, one of the names that was mentioned, I think with every other award today at the award ceremony is one of our really stellar guys graduating seniors going off to Yale. Uh, Lucas Kutsukas. Among his many achievements, Lucas was one of only uh, two students here in the state of Connecticut and a hundred and sixty-one nationally to be recognized as a presidential scholar. Um, so that's a very big deal. So we want to congratulate Lucas and his family. Um, we also want to recognize um, Avni Gupta, who was um, honored as a National Merit Scholar. Um, so. No terrific, you know, we had um, um, a small uh, host of students who were um, committed scholars, also semi-finalists and finalists and um, Lucas was um, or excuse me, Avni, one of twenty-five hundred across the country out of like fifteen thousand who was recognized as scholar. So really tremendous, tremendous accomplishment for her. Um, I don't know if you saw the news, but our music program has once again been recognized by the um, NAMM National Association of Music Educators for um, being a best community for music education here in the country. And I think it's the third or fourth consecutive recognition. Um, so congratulations to um, all of our uh, music educators. Um, I also want to extend uh, my congratulations and thanks to not just our um, music educators, but all of our fine and performing um, arts educators. Yeah, I know if you're aware, this time of year is art show season, it's concert season. And um, those folks are as busy as anybody, um, running all over town, holding art shows, holding concerts. They're just, they're everywhere. There was a really tremendous event a few weeks ago at the Wilton Library where we do kind of an all call. So you know, decorate the entire library with our students' artwork. And then we have um, student artists there giving exhibitions. We have all kinds of music shows. So it's a really um, just tremendous community event in a tremendous space. There are hundreds and hundreds of people who kind of trek through both families as well as just um, you know, community members at large. And uh, they are, our staff really um, has figured out how to bring out the best in our students. And so um, I want to just take my hat off to all of those folks tonight. Uh, we also want to congratulate our video and digital media students who um, competed again this year in the um, Area Nine Cable Council Awards. Um, Wilton uh, won eleven awards. So the high school won five second place awards. They won a third place award. Um, Cider Mill swept the animated stop motion category with first, second, and third place trophies. Um, they also took a first place in the uh, narrative fiction category. And Miller Driscoll came home with a second place with the um, very famous Miller Driscoll Morning Show. So congratulations to them. Um, and last but not least, um, I know we're here tonight, but there's a whole crowd next door in the clone because tonight's the opening night of Mary Poppins. Uh, we have, I don't know, something like seventy-five students participating between the cast and crew. Uh, so. If you have time this weekend, or please make time, um, performances will be uh, tonight, tomorrow, and then Saturday, seven o'clock. And then Saturday and Sunday at one P M. Um, so you can kind of search it up online and get tickets, but it is sure to be a crowd pleaser. So please go see it.
Students are flying and everything.
They are. Superintendent's flew too. Someone had to test the rigging. So yeah, it's great. Uh, it's gonna be a really good show.
Um, committee reports. Policy did not meet teaching and learning. Business ops did not meet either.
Okay.
Oh, can I just happen and say um, the science curriculum review cycle finished?
Okay.
And social studies, the last one is tomorrow. And it's been great to be, I was on the original one, like the first time they went through it. And so the amount of work, I mean, it's just amazing. Like we just go that much farther this cycle and.
Also, we look forward to hearing about it. Um, review and discuss special education update.
Fabio, Sandra, Leonardo and team.
Very much. Um, well, special ed continues here in Wilton. Um, we've had a, an amazing year of growth and development for our students. Um, our staff has put in um, an extraordinary level of work as we continue to um, feel the effects in this post-pandemic environment. Um, a couple of trends we see across not only Wilton, but in the state and in the nation are um, a continued increase in the number of new referrals to special education across the continuum, pre-K, all the way up. We're seeing increase in the number of referrals, um, and the number of students being eligible for and in need of special education services. Across the nation, you've read it, you've heard it, we feel it, and we address it. Um, the increase in the uh, issues related to mental health of our young people um, are at early adolescents and adolescents and younger. Um, and the impact that is having on their ability to access their education, um, and that ends up in special ed land. So we are continuing to see that trend. Um, we are continuing to see an uptick in the number of students requiring psychiatric hospitalization. And I'm not sure if the board is aware, the community is aware that if and when a youngster is um, is hospitalized in a psychiatric hospital by state law, we are required to refer to a special ed um, process to determine whether or not there is a disability that requires special education. There's no choice. You have, must refer and go through that process. So with that uptick comes additional evaluations, additional reviews, and the time and intention of the staff to make those determinations um, about what the student may need and um, whether or not it's a disability that requires specialized instruction. Um, the impact of that, um, even if the child is not determined to have a disability, if they're in a psychiatric hospital. For example, if you have a high school student who ends up in a psychiatric hospital for two weeks, imagine what they come back to in terms of what they have to make up. Right? So while we provide tutorial services in compliance with state law when we need to, that student is coming back in further under the, you know, behind the eight ball, so to speak, in terms of trying to manage their mental health and under the pressure and stress. And often these are our highest functioning learners. These are really exceptional learners. They're in high-end classes and they're overwhelmed. And so we are dealing with that on a regular basis. Um, our staff is, um, you know, that all just doesn't happen during the school day. So our staff is very much addressing those needs nights and weekends and um, across the board with families and with children. So um, it is quite a it has quite a lot of impact on our staff, um, and the heroic work they do. And I say heroic with intention. Um, because many times we've heard of people who've actually, um, our staff who've actually, you know, saved a life because they've responded and been available in those times when a student is struggling and their family is struggling. So um, if I can just take that moment to thank all of them, um, it is an amazing uh, amount of work that they do and they do it with great passion and great commitment to the kids and the families of this community.
I have a quick question for you. So that's amazing. And are these students were typically not in the special ed umbrella that are having like, when you were talking about these students, are we seeing a pattern of students who were not previously in special ed?
Uh, more than ever before.
Okay.
More than ever before, we're seeing students who are new referrals to special ed, very late in their educational career.
Interesting. Scary.
You know, we, we catch a lot, but often these are students in eleventh grade, sometimes twelfth grade who are, who are uh, experiencing these things for the first time and are referred to special education at that time. Uh, more than ever before. Um, so, yeah. Um, but there's plenty of good news, plenty of good news. Um, for those kids, for these kids and for the rest of our kids with disabilities, the work that's happening is creating great growth. While we haven't closed the entire achievement gap yet, um, there are um, individually, there are stories of heroic growth. Students who come into us or have come to us with significant needs, making monumental growth across a year. Um, greater than a year's growth in a year, year and a half, two years' growth as measured by academic standards. Um, students in these programs that we'll talk about tonight who have uh, developed a skill set that allows them to get back to where uh, they can learn freely and really um, show uh, and, and create a passion for learning again. Um, so last year when we were here, we brought some people before you to take what I call a victory lap um, to talk about the continuum of services in special education. Special ed, you recall, special ed is not a place. So while we call these programs, it's not about separating students. It's about creating a constellation of services around the student that allows them to access the curriculum and the hidden curriculum of school, all the functional aspects of school, all sports and plays and music and all of those things. Because it gives them the services and supports they need, um, you know, behind the scenes. Um, tonight, um, we wanted to do some work with the elementary and do a victory lap, but so many people couldn't be here that I'm gonna ask for a um, I'm gonna ask you to let me do another victory lap at the elementary in September. Um, when the staff who really deserves the accolades can be here to receive them. So if that's okay, we'll save the early learning center at Miller Driscoll, um, and have them come do a little victory lap for you for our youngest kids. Um, and then work with somewhat, some of the work that's happening at the elementary level. Um, but tonight we're gonna focus on a part, a piece of our continuum of service. You've heard us talk about D B T. You've heard us talk about the programming. Last year we came and talked to you about Genesis, um, which is a program you know well and have supported. Um, and perhaps a piece of the continuum of services we provide um, at both Middlebrook and the high school. Um, so I wanted to give them a chance to really describe the work we do there, what, who we serve and how we serve them. Um, and the impact it's having on, on those students and their quest to, to meet the standards of the portrait of the graduate. Um, and then, um, so I'm gonna hand it over and introduce you to them. Tonight representing Middlebrook is Nicole Corze. And then we have Kathy Weiss from Wilton High School's Flex Program and Emily Montgomery. Also from the Flex Program, we're gonna talk a little bit about that continuum, that piece of the continuum of service. Um, and how they support kids. And we do also have some uh, in, input from students and parents for you to see as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole first.
Yeah, for having us. Um, as Andrea mentioned, we're all really passionate about what we do and I'm really here to represent Middlebrook and the amazing people who are at Middlebrook. Um, we have embedded D B T in the several settings. We're not gonna go into exactly what D B T is today because you know, large presentation, I believe, that's all. Uh, but your second slide tonight shows you the three tiers of support that we offer in the schools. The tier one level, just to remind you, is given through our late classes through and then also through some home classes as well. Tier two is given through small group, um, in the high school and the two out of the four-day rotation. And then also at Middlebrook, um, small group classes run by um, either our counselors or our school psychologists. And then tier three, what we're gonna focus on tonight is our daily D B T classes. Um, given by our support center teacher at um, Middlebrook and then through Emily Montgomery in the Flex Program at the high school. So you go to your third slide. So again, I'm here to represent Middlebrook and mostly the amazing Tanya Leonard, if you all know as well. Um, she's actually running her children's color run today. Uh, she ran ours on Monday, so she's been doing some of the few things, you know. Um, and then also she's supported by Bonnie Schiffler, who is our school social worker. Um, and this is all through uh, their program, the Support Center, which runs the daily D B T. And it's three uh, daily classes through each stride class in the mornings. We try to hold them in the morning so that um, it helps kids who may have anxiety or worry coming from school, come into school daily. Uh, and during these classes, we do D B T, but we also embed some social thinking and as well. And it really helps the students develop skills, um, when they are just regular in the school, so they can go back to class. This is really our wonderful. Um, we've seen a significant success and different successes at any different levels for all the students. Um, in particular attendance coming to school daily, their academic achievement scores, um, you know, testing is one thing, it's all kind of animal. But when you're regulated and you feel good and you know that you can access your strategies and take deep breaths and hold ice packs and whatever helps you, it's implicit that your scores will, will go up. And also you're just ready for your um, learning for the day. So that's really what we try to focus on. Um, and then also we've seen a significant decrease over the years and their arc of development over our three years at Middlebrook. Their services have decreased either through special education or by war or students who may have been in Tanya's program, don't necessarily go to so that's a really great thing. Um, we want to make sure that we support students as they grow and develop, but we also want to increase their independence and let them fly as they, as they can. So um, that's something that we're very proud of. And um, again, I have to give most of the credit to Tanya and Bonnie. So, um, and then another layer for Middlebrook that uh, we started embedding last year is um, the staff training. Because you know, people were hearing about how well these kids are doing or how kids are doing well with the skills across their classes. And so last year, um, Tanya led a all-school training for all staff. And they was after school and they learned all four modules just to help use similar language. Um, we made beautiful posters for their rooms just to make sure that the uh, vocabulary was more embedded with the classrooms. Um, and then this year, Tanya uh, ran a after-school group of high school and middlebrook teachers and one administrator, I believe, Bob O'Donnell, um, who attended the sessions. And there were two-hour trainings after school and they were um, funded by the P T A. Thank you, P T A, very much. Uh, and it was really to apply the D B T skills that the students uh, were learning at home. Um, to the teachers and then also um, to their classrooms. So the teachers loved it. They want more. They want to run another session. So hopefully we'll be able to do something like that again next year. Uh, and then finally, the parents of the students who attend the daily D B T classes, uh, we offer monthly parent sessions where they go through which module and which skills they're learning so that they can take that language and those skills home and use it with their children. Um, and those were offered in uh, by Zoom and in person. And then really we've just found that all of those wraparound and um, additional supports through the teachers, the staff and the parents just help to support the kids more in all the environments. So we're very proud of everything they're doing.
It's a lovely anecdote when a seventh-grade young man tells his father in a meeting, Dad, it's time to practice radical exercise. Nothing better than when you hear that happen. So uh, the kids are really owning those skills and it's showing across the board. So we're very proud of that. And now we'll talk to Emily and Kathy about the Flex Program as part of our continuum of services here at Wilton School.
Yep. So thank you for having us. Um, the Flex Program, I'm like so honored to be a part of and have been and used to work at Middlebrook. So was, really could see the continuum of service from Support Center up to the Flex. But we serve, our program serves a group of students, and I would say, um, what Andrea said, the most fragile students. Um, we definitely have seen an uptick in terms of the students accessing the Flex Program. Um, these students are identified as needing a continuum of both, of both academic as well as emotional support. So we tend to have really bright kids, but the barrier to their education and succeeding is their emotional, often dysregulation or lack of coping strategies. We provide wraparound services for these fragile learners, um, with the idea of hoping that as they move through our program, that they become more and more independent and we get them ready for life after high school. Um, so the team at the high school consists of myself and Christina DeNage, who is a psychologist who we work with. And two special ed teachers who are extraordinary, Emily Montgomery and Beth Ann Zarella. So it's a wraparound continuum of services that is available for the students as well as the parents. Um, and that's kind of in a nutshell.
Okay, so the structure of our program, so it is a pretty large classroom and it also has the mental health team attached. So we're all kind of in one space, which is really easy for the kids. And kind of in the morning, it functions as like a home base and a check-in for our kids. So we're able to kind of get eyes on all of our kids, have a good read of kind of the projection of their day and be proactive with using that D B T language and using skills. So if they are having a dysregulated day, how are we gonna manage a six-hour day of rigorous academic classes? So is it breaking it down into, let's start with ten-minute breaks at the start and then we'll get you back into class? Is it checking out, checking in halfway through your class, figuring out ways that meets the needs of those students and making it as successful as they're capable of being during that day? Um, in addition, they have it scheduled into their day. So it is a special education service. So it's built into their block. And it's a place where they create, receive academic and emotional support. So like Andrea said and Kathy said, these kids are really smart and enrolled in really rigorous academic classes. And it's this push and pull of wanting to succeed in their classes and do well academically and achieve what they are capable. And also having this emotional barrier that often inhibits their ability to learn. So it's really challenging and it causes a lot of overwhelming feelings for them. Um, so we are able to break down, a lot of the times they might not need direct academic support, but it's the executive functioning, it's communicating with their teachers, having them have their accommodations reached, all these things that kind of build a learner and a student, we help and support in that way. And on days when students are struggling and they might come out of an academic class and come seek our support, we are all trained in D B T and we all have the language. And also all of our kids are enrolled in our D B T Wellness Seminar, so they know the language. So they get like this scaffolded systematic instruction in the classroom and then they're able to apply it daily when they come out of a class or when needed in our classroom um, throughout the day. And then like the last piece of the puzzle is Kathy and Christina run a parent D B T, so it's also used at home. So they get this, the instruction, it's applied when needed and when they're dysregulated. And then at home, the parents use the same, same language and um, strategies as we use. So it's a full wraparound and it's really effective. And also for some of our more fragile kids, we also have flat, flex academic classes. So it can be really daunting for a student to go into a classroom of twenty-five kids and sit and learn. And like you said, the emotions really inhibit their ability to learn at times. So these are small group instruction. And it's project-based learning. So it's catered to the needs of this leap of the learner and it also directly aligns to the curriculum. So it gets them the information they're able to learn in a comfortable, safe environment and get their academics in a different setting rather than a full classroom of twenty-five kids. So with that, we asked our kids to give us some feedback on what Flex is to them. So.
And I was just gonna.
How many kids are in the Flex Program?
All right. That's a growing. Yeah.
Probably like.
Yeah.
Fifty-ish, yeah.
And what percentage of parents do you feel are, just off the top of your head, engaged in the uh, D B T program for parents?
Um, I would say um, probably about of those fifteen percent, twenty percent. I think some of it is the timing. We're gonna actually, um, our rap, our last wrap-up session is next Friday and it's in the morning and they're gonna actually, we're gonna have an in-person, um, which they've been asking for. So we're gonna do an in-person, in-person uh, session. I think some of it is the timing. So it's either, I, you know, in the morning and some of the parents aren't able to do that. So we've kind of gone back and forth about when we should do it, when we would be able to have access to many of the parents. Um, but it's been great and they've been consistent, which, um, and we'll talk about some of their uh, reflections also, because they were um, I think they've really enjoyed it. And I think one of the things also is that for the kids that, a safe place in a high school. And it, and that's, I think, more than anything else. These kids, and I, having worked with them, were not just one hospitalization, but two or three hospitalizations in a, in a given year. And then to try to step back into the rigor of Wilton High School, really regardless of what level class you're taking, they need that level of accommodation and a safety net where in Middlebrook, you have the teams. So it's easier for the kids to come back and they've got a group of teachers here. Your teachers are all over the place. And so it's about communicating with the parents and communicating with the teachers and um, helping them with the language of stepping back in. And that's just one of, you know, the types of kids that, that we um, work with.
Do they come in and out of the program? Do they say, I don't need this anymore? I can do this on my own?
Yeah, some of.
Or do they come back? Or do they come mid-year and say, I'm, I can't manage this. I need to be in here. I, I, is there that back and forth?
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah, since it is a special ed service.
So they have to be under the umbrella of special ed?
Yes. So they're often, they're identified with emotional disability. Um, but there are times when students learn the skills, learn, have the ability to access their day pretty seamlessly and they're able to exit our program, which is really exciting for them. And kind of go about, of course, we're always open arms to them if they need. But there are students who kind of like figure it out and like master these skills and learn the strategies to successfully go about their day without our support.
And in terms of coming in and out, typically I would say there, um, the goal is to decrease the level of involvement. And that's what's been great to see. So whereas a freshman might have, or even someone who comes in as a sophomore, the idea is we're always talking about the independence of the skills and what, how can they problem solve and help them? And we, you know, we think about life after high school and what are you gonna do? We're not gonna be here. So you gotta, kinda.
I didn't know that they were under the special ed umbrella. So first they have to be under the, that umbrella and then, then they come to you. They have to be under that auspices. It can't be just.
Middlebrook, you don't have to. It's offered through.
That's what I.
Stride block.
Yeah.
So the stride block, they can be in five oh four, if these students are struggling, um, we keep the um, kind of the gate keys to, so that not everybody, because there's uh, one teacher and if you need that daily support, there must be a reason. So we go through our S R B I process and we also have students of concern meeting. So we review and talk about what kids need just to make sure that um, it's really the kids who need the daily intervention, because you are losing a stride class. So you weren't accessing either art or music or what have you. Um, and to your second question, um, we do have students who decrease. That's our goal. Um, instead of one other, every sixty, or sorry, daily for sixty, sometimes it goes to four out of six or every other day. Um, but we do have some students who graduate and then they go to seventh grade or eighth grade and they say, I need to go back. And it's, it comes from them. So um, there are some who are like, whoa, I, I need to, I need to practice my skills again. So.
I would say create a layer of D B T with some of these kids. They would still absent themselves from class. But they would absent themselves and do nothing with it. Yeah. They would just, they get the pressure release of getting, of leaving class.
Right.
But there wouldn't be the skill development to either get them back to class or to teach them how to stay. Or to teach them how to stay in class, how to be anxious and be okay in class.
Right, and manage anxiety.
So the goal of DBT is to recognize that it's not about never being anxious. It's about being anxious and knowing you're going to be okay.
Yeah.
Right? I got this. I can live with this.
Yeah.
And be okay. Um, and so that's the skill. You know, what we like about DBT. Is that it is a teaching construct. It's about skill development, right? Versus other forms of therapy that are not really suited. To school. DBT is really very much suited to an educational environment. It's about teaching skills. Implementing, applying those skills in multiple environments. So it's really a powerful tool for schools to have. Um, and our next, you know, as you know, we tried to move it toward cider mill. Um, and we'll be back. We see it as very powerful.
It would be very powerful.
We're doing some training with some staff members at cider mill to develop their skill level. Um. To extend that continuum down. So we'll be back. You'll see me again.
Good, okay.
The fifty year students at the high school, do you see all of them every day?
No, not, uh-uh. I mean, some kids, we have kids that. Check in every single morning. Like that's my safe place of thirteen hundred plus students. Like I need to see. Us in the morning dancing around smiling like, okay, and then they move forward. And there are other kids who stop in once or twice a week, depends on what they need. And that is flexible. That depends. So you know. Someone has a situation outside of school that's untenable. And sometimes they just need a little, just a little like, we're here, we've got you, let's see. Get you to class and then they can kind of do, you know, go on their way and then come back. Um, but it, 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 there's a, there's a wide range of um, situations that happen. And I think the other part. Is supporting the parents. And I think that was, I don't think I've ever in my entire time being here, asked for like. Feedback in terms of like this, like what do you think? And they just were. Just glowing. It was really nice to see some of the way that they felt supported by us and. Um, and particularly when you're right now dealing with mental health. And hospitals or outpatient and that's not their wheelhouse. I always say to them, it's not like. If I had a law, a law situation and I had to go to a lawyer, I would like have no idea how to navigate that. So I think that's part of what we do is we also help them. How do you navigate the system to get your needs met as well as your kids? Um, so it's kind of really is a full wraparound.
I want to the parents. Um. Would you like us to do some of the comments you have in front of you?
Pick a couple of your favorites.
Yeah, pick, pick some.
I mean, I, the one that I like is, um. Actually, I don't even know what it is anymore. Um. It was, um. Lex provides me, this is from a kid, quote, Lex provides me a safe. Place and well-being, a safe and well-being place where I'm allowed to feel however I feel on the moment. Um, and I think just having that. You know, I think speaks to the flex.
And then we can read some of what the parents have.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is from a parent. Lex affords her the ability, her child, her the ability to untangle her necklace. She leaves her school feeling fed. She leaves for school well-fed with a smile on her face and within minutes of entering the building, that necklace has the potential to unravel. The spiral and suddenly the necklace is tangled beyond repair. Mrs. Weiss and Miss Montgomery don't look away from this. They never forego being there for my daughter. How they break down obstacles is their superpower. They recognize the trigger she has. And speaks the language in order to have her maintain calm in her, in her perceived tsunami.
Um. A combination of you just pulling out some of it. Another quote is, uh, what Flex is for my child, an outlet for freedom of expression without judgment. Criticism or blame. A place to be with your closest friends, a personalized intimate, small group setting where kids with learning challenges and. Social emotional needs can thrive. And what the parent, um, part of it is for her. Sharing techniques and managing behaviors, providing unconditional emotional support and fostering. Healthy social connections, utilizing the same skills at home and at school. Which fosters continuity and reinforcement, reinforces the DBT language and strategies. For parents, children and teachers.
And then the last one we'll leave you with is Kathy, Christina and Emily and others have been nothing, which, nothing short of amazing over the past two years. If it was not for this program, my daughter would surely have to leave Wilton High School for an alternative school. She was failing miserably, not attending and had zero motivation. The personal education, coaching and therapy. She receives on a daily basis has changed the way she views school, kept her interested in functioning. And with the feel, and with the feeling that her educators actually care about her well-being.
That's pretty great.
Yeah, they were, they were wonderful.
Amazing.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, bravo.
No, yeah, sure.
Well, can I ask you a question not related to DBT? Sure. Um. I think last year we were talking about Middlebrook and some of our students that received special education services. Keeping them in a classroom more, pulling them out. You guys been able to achieve that?
Yes, and with our new schedule. Thank you all. We are certainly going, uh, working towards that now and um, through our skill groups. Are, um, having kids more and more in the classroom and accessing world language. So, um, we are well on our way, um, to our goal.
Yeah, thank you.
Andrea, I just, I don't know if anybody else, before I ask a question, if anybody else. Is there kind of? Like DBT light? Like the idea of like that framework or that language? Kind of just being embedded almost like in that tier. Tier one, like.
I think that's the work that, that Nicole was talking about, that we're trying at Middlebrook to give. We're not asking teachers to do DBT therapy, right? I. Um. Sorry, um, we're not asking teachers to do DBT therapy. Just like we're not asking parents to do DBT therapy. The power of giving people the language of DBT. Is to understand the skill we're trying to develop so that in the moment. If you see a student in distress. You can, you can remind them of the skill. That they could use to help master themselves. Right? So it's like a teacher in a, in a reading class reminding them of the reading strategy. Before they start to read. A teacher can give a little language or the poster in the room can just remind the student enough. That, ah, yeah, this is how I feel when I feel this way and here's a skill I can use to help me master myself. Um, so I think as, as we develop DBT across the continuum. Part of the piece is to think about how we, um, give. Information to teachers and parents in support of that work. Not that they're going to ask them to do DBT therapy. We're not. But we do want to give them the language to support a child in the moment. Um, in a short burst of just remind them of the language, remind them of the skills they have.
Yeah, I, I was even thinking to some extent, even in a more like broader context, the way. You know, our kids, like our kindergartners or our first graders now kind of use the language of ruler and that carries them up with them.
There's a lot of DBT light in ruler. You know, when we get to the meta moments and. There's a lot of DBT light in all of that work that helps kids kind of identify how they feel.
Right.
Which is the first step. You got to understand how you feel. And then you have to think about how can I?
So that language is not just something that's familiar to the child that's in the program, that it's kind of. You know, yeah.
Classes.
Health classes, yeah.
For Jenna, that's.
Right.
So hopefully it'll.
The skills are beneficial to.
Everybody, right.
You know, the, the skills are good skills for all of us to have. Um. Some kids need more direct instruction in the skills. Some kids can pick it up and, and run with it. Um. Through a health class, through a, the kind of the thread through the curriculum.
No, and, and even just the way kids talk to each other or help each other.
I love when the little ones talk about radical acceptance.
I know, I'm just waiting for my six year olds.
Mom, it's time for radical acceptance. It's the best thing.
That's a lot of the work that Kim Zemo is doing. So. All the different tiers of SEO and so from ruler all the way up to terms of DBT is where it's all embedded and. Middlebrook has taken all of the different modules and embedded it into, um, the different tiers. And so like tier one in health classes, um. And some of the light classes by the counselors, each module within DBT over students' three years will be covered. So. She did a lot of work with that, Tanya and the counselors and the mental health team.
And the high school has standalone, um. DBT elective classes now, wellness seminar, which is amazing. And they're getting, now we have doubled that. So I think. It's kind of getting word out with even the kids like, oh, I would take a wellness class, you know? And by the way, I have a daughter in college who takes, there is wellness classes in college you can also take. So it's just a continuum now. So.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saving lives every day.
Right.
Quite literally.
It's chart well.
Bobby, do you want to come on in?
Sure. Again, I was.
So welcome.
So thank you.
Chartwell's first, uh, board meeting. Um, why don't you, do me, I can introduce. You all, why don't you introduce yourselves and just kind of tell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So, um, good evening, September Payne Smith. Screen board members. Administration staff. Parents and students. My name is Bill Tomlinson. I'm the director of Wilton School's Chartwell's Service Program. Thank you, thank you. I was taking up to, to present through tonight already. Fully been revealed. You see on the right, we have your agenda. Uh, it's pretty packed tonight, so.
And I'm Bobby Martin. I'm the area director, uh, for Chartwells. I've been with Compass for about ten years, a little over ten years. Uh, two years with Chartwells, uh, prior with Morrison Healthcare. Um. And I, I have business in, uh, most of Fairfield County and upwards of central Connecticut. To, uh, Hartford County. So big span. Uh, Bill's been, uh, in the district now a little over a year. Uh, he comes from, uh, Westport. Uh, as a chef manager and assistant director there for six years. Uh, and then on our screen too is, uh, Stephen Robowski. He's our chef manager, uh, and focused at the, at the high school. Uh, and Damaris Vargas is our administrative assistant, uh, a part of supporting. Next slide.
And I am on this slide there. My name is Sarah Patterson. I'm the regional dietitian with Chartwells. Um, so I act as a support for Wilton and the other districts that we have in the New England area. Um, along with this great team of, of coworkers. And I have been with Compass Group for, uh, almost ten years myself. This is my sixth school year with Chartwells. Um, I'm based out of Providence, but previous to COVID and everything that. Has happened in the past three years, I would come out here regularly, um, to see the great things that they were doing. Here in the different cafeterias. So now that things are back to normal. Um, I hope to get out here again more often and see the events that are happening.
And then you'll see the rest of the team there. Uh, that's okay. Uh, Tom McDonald, he's our regional vice president, uh, which, who I report to. Uh, Samantha Keem is our marketing director, uh, a regional executive chef, Chase Sobelman, and then Trudy Gauz are financialists. And analysts. Uh, as Sarah mentioned, she's in the New England region. Most of that team other than Trudy is also in the New England region. And, uh, our regular support to our districts. Next.
I wanted to introduce you to our local team, our local team here on site. On the top left is our high school, Wilton High School team. To the right of that is our Miller Driscoll team. You can see they have some fun, uh, cartoon character in the shirts. Uh, we're going to get into that later, what that is. On the lower left is our team, Middlebrook team, and on the right is our team, uh, cider mill.
So we, uh, adjusted the, the agenda slightly. Uh, get to, uh, want to get to the exciting stuff. So we'll talk about a little bit of the boring stuff. In the moment. Uh, but I wanted to highlight, uh. Our, uh, our financial, uh, performance over the last few years. You'll reference, uh, you can reference the eighteen nineteen year, we were still on the NSOP program, National School Lunch. Uh, program, which now we've been off of now for a few years right before COVID. Um, actually, first year off the program was. The, the year we shut down due to COVID. Um, and then we weren't in sessions twenty one, twenty two, uh, twenty twenty one. And then we reopened with some restrictions, twenty, twenty one, twenty two. And now we have our, uh, current year, um, fully open, normal, a service model twenty two, twenty three. Uh, you'll see the, the bars seem pretty comparable, eighteen nineteen to current. Uh, but that's also reflective of, of a reduction in enrollment of degree of students. So ultimately, um. You know, our performance is pretty solid, um. With, with that reduction in, in enrollment and coming off the program. NSOP program, if you don't know, there's some reimbursements and, and, uh. Dollars provided from the state, um, to support the program based on running the USDA, uh, guidelines. Next slide. Uh, here shows more of a, a revenue profitability. So again, the sale number at the top. Uh, and then the profitability at the bottom. But again, showing, uh, that performance, uh, in this year. Um, you know. Making up for some of that lost, uh, in those two COVID years. But more so comparing that we're, we're in a much better position off program with greater participation.
So I want to talk a little bit about our menu development process. That's something that typically I do in, uh, middle of summer for the start of the new year. And what I do is I review sales menus from prior year. Uh, and get some feedback and, and from new menu concepts and incorporate that into our menu cycle. Um, I get the marketing and train support from our regional support team. And, and any revisions and student feedback. Uh, and use that as well. On the right, you see that, you know, our monthly promotions that we are going to be talking about in the next couple of five, and student choice, discovery kitchen and mood boosts. And all of these really experience the optimized student, um, dining experience.
Yeah, so these are our, uh, our branded concepts, some of them. Uh, the ones on the top are more of our, our classic. Concepts that you'll see in most schools. Uh, they're incorporated in, in, in several menus, uh, no matter the grade level. The ones in the bottom are, are more, they're, they're newer. Um, and, uh, were introduced post-COVID. Uh, so a lot of research and development, you know, trends. I've seen with the kids like, uh, mac and cheeseology is what it says. It's a mac and cheese program. Uh, road trip is. Is, uh, connected to various regions throughout, throughout the country. So, you know, um, focusing on different states and their preferred. Um. Food item that they celebrate. Um, and then revolution noodle and veg out, uh, both have been very successful at the high school. Next slide.
I wanted to just highlight some of the district's large concept, uh, models that we've been doing. On the top left is our Miller Driscoll service line. It's, uh, I, I, I've been eating all the fresh fruits and vegetables. And, um, uh, but cream yogurt, Benzo Box. Uh, through all that is our cider mill service line, again, offering the fresh foods and. Uh, to the right, uh, on the right side is our Middlebrook pizza program, where we offer a lot of variety, a couple of different slices and pizza. Variety. And in the middle is our revolution noodle bowl that Bobby mentioned about, uh, we're running at the high school. And this really gives students, uh, a, a way to choose what they want. And to build their own meal. Next slide.
And so these are, uh, some of our core engagement programs. Uh, this is in addition to those concepts. And they are with, with they say that our engagement, you know, different levels, discovery kitchen is more broad. Uh, we do that at the high school all the way down to elementary levels. And it's more of a community engagement, you know, getting the faculty, uh, students, even parents involved. And a lot of education around, uh, nutritious, um. Uh, nutritious, nutritious foods, uh, and, uh, nutritious nutrition education in connection to what they see in, in the cafeteria. Uh, student choice. Uh, this is generally middle school, high school. We offer a couple of those concepts you saw on the pre, a couple of previous slides. Um, and they are able to make that choice. Um, so. We do, uh, a virtual voting. They can do it on their phone if they have them. Um, and at the lower levels, we do, it's, uh, like a paper ballot. But that, the, uh, they, they choose and the winner runs, uh, runs through the cafeteria the next week, uh, the menu. Uh, mood boost, more of a, uh, K eight program, K five. Um, there's, uh, some, some moody's we call them, uh, they're like cartoon characters. Color, color coordinated with the different food groups, uh, different fruits and vegetables. And, um, that we educate them and, uh, you know. Try to engage them in these fruit and vegetables if they're not. You know, generally interested, it might be. You know, generally interested, it might be an opportunity using the characters as a way to engage them. And they also. Educate them on the different moods that they may have based on eating these fruits and vegetables. So calm, smart, confidence. So it's, it's, again, it's a solid engagement to get the kids active in, in helping.
This is our Discovery Kitchen program. I ran a cider mill last December. It ties in with one of our local, our monthly promotions as well. Let's get cooking. What that is. It takes the recipe I made, which was an apple, a cranberry active relish. And tied it in with them tasting something in the school and then bringing that home and then engaging their parents to, you know, make it with them at home. And you're able to utilize also fresh local apples sourced in Connecticut. So we're looking for local pros as well. So it's a great way to sign that in. Next slide. Student choices, Bobby just mentioned, was a program, this program running at the high school and will continue to run it next year. And it's just a great way for students to be able to choose between two items. And select the, what they like the best and we'll feature that in upcoming menus.
So which one, one?
The plain one. It was definitely over the roots burger. So yeah, it was an exciting day. They really enjoyed it.
I had it on the screen. It was, they're, they're really engaged. Definitely loving the samples. So. Staying on trend, this smoothie station, this was. This had been in the works over the last couple of years around marketing it. So there's. The smoothies in general that have been successful at the high school, Chart Wells had just come up with a full marketing program for it. Monica here, who's one of our high performing employees, had a project to do. So we rolled it out at the high school. Last month that was done, doing some samples and really, you know, accentuating that marketing kit. So very successfully, we've got some student testimonials that went over really, really well. But again, it's just getting them engaged and getting that feedback and knowing where to guide the menus. So.
Still staying on trend, you know, offering that fresh food. We have a local vendor that we have coming to, to school. High school and handle sushi. It's a huge area. It's the administration and staff. It's just a great way to break up the variety of what they normally have every day. And it's just a really popular item. So we're going to continue to do that throughout the year, once a month, maybe twice a month for high school. That's like. Made to order pizza program. This is something that we've done pre-COVID. And I wanted to bring it back because now that I have the opportunity to report that in all the stores, especially the high school. This is a great opportunity to really make some homemade items and really build items to what people want. Tailored to what their tastes are. So you have a, a whole menu there. They can choose whatever they'd like. And the pizza's made to order right in front of them and it's, it's cooked in two to three minutes. And the kids absolutely love it. It's offered by a nice healthy side salad as well.
Any chance we can partner with Pepe's?
The hypo master culinary class. So we, back in February, so as I mentioned, Monica earlier. This program is to take some of our frontline staff and grow and develop them into salary managers. So the part of the program is a culinary module. So what we did was the, in the master culinary class is something that we do quarterly throughout the region. So we select a school. And usually it's a, a down week. So this one was during a preparatory break. And we engage some local salaried managers from different schools, in addition to some frontline staff. So this one, we highlighted our high performer. Program, selectees, Monica being one of them. And they have a culinary module that they do. So this was able to sort of bridge those two, those two programs. And so they had some, did some safety training. They did some, some, some preparation training. And they were able to put these plates together at the end to different groups. And they received this certificate at the end. So. It was good to do it over as nice and open at the high school. Good times.
One, two minutes to talk about one of my plays, Menialism. She is, she's been with us over a year, but she had history. And I wanted to share that because it really ties in with the community. About six years ago, she came from Syria. She was a refugee. She had to flee from Syria and she had an amazing journey. And. It was a lot that she went through. And it was great that she was able to find a way in here in Wilton and partnered with the Interfaith Committee. And then, you know, they, they took her in and gave her a home, gave her some skills. And she's been a great asset. I mean, she's a mother of five, working full time. And just recently, last year in December, she got her citizenship in the United States. So. Everything I just mentioned on top of that, you know, she's an amazing woman and she's just.
Does she work for you?
She works for.
I was part of the group that picked her up at the airport.
Oh, wow.
And I was part of the group that got their kids with Kathy and cider mill. And walk them, you know, help them navigate the public schools. But I've known her, I, I mean, this is a real success story because now all her interests citizens as well.
That's why I wanted to share that. But I think it's really important.
I didn't know she worked for you. I saw she, she's moving one of the schools. Is she?
Yeah, she's in the middle of her school.
That's great.
So it's just great to see.
Yeah, it's a great little story. And her kids are amazing too. So. Beautiful.
Next slide is a school lunch hero day. This is the day I wanted to also really celebrate. My employee. This day is dedicated once a year. To our Wells employees, to really honor them and, you know, show them, you know, they're the backbone of what we do. You know, they're there every day. They love what they're doing. They, they're, they're serving up happy, healthy to their students and staff every day. So I like to take the day and honor them. I mean, superhero come with capes. But these people have where their aprons and phone, but they are truly all the superhero of the past areas. So I like to just honor them.
This is my slide. So, um, MenuWorks is our menu management tool that we use behind the scenes. And the great thing about it is that even though Wilton is off the National School Lunch Program. When Bill goes in to plan his menus, he can use MenuWorks as a tool and still look at what the National School Lunch guidelines are. When everything is compliant according to NSLP standards, everything turns green, has a little check mark in the system. And if you're missing food groups, it'll have a little red X to kind of tell you what you need to add to make your menus fit that meal pattern. So with MenuWorks, Bill can just double check that he's offering the different components, the grains, the proteins, fruits, vegetables, milk. All of those things that we think of as a balanced nutritious meal. But still have the flexibility to do the fun things like sushi, because you would never see sushi. At, you know, probably never see sushi on a, on a National School Lunch program. It's just really hard to fit that kind of meal into the standards. So the benefits of that and the increased variety of being off the program. And then especially at the lower level, the elementary kids. MenuWorks communicates with Nutrislice. So I don't know if any of you have used Nutrislice before to look at what's on the menus. You can look at it on a laptop, desktop, desktop computer, an app on your phone. But it's great because it takes all the information that's in MenuWorks and it's our forward facing platform where you can look at the menu. You can see what we're serving in the cafeteria. You can also look at the nutrition information and any of the allergens too. So it helps that people who have kids in the schools that have food allergies to navigate that, which can be really scary sometimes. And then annual training. So a lot of what I do in the schools is behind the scenes. I do come out and attend events and, and visit the different cafeterias. But I do more kind of behind the scenes things like trainings. So coming out. Or doing a virtual allergen training, production record training. Oh yeah. And then the beverages we, but so, so Bill and anybody, any one of our Chart Wells. Districts has access to these trainings that are required on an annual basis, just to make sure that we're safe serving the kids safely. That have the allergies and then the production records really help us to keep track of. A, what we're serving and B, if, if the kids are liking what we're serving, you know, are we. Are we making enough of an item and go back in and kind of see, okay, the elementary school was on a field trip this day. We need to, you know, modify that for, for the future. So trainings around those, those topics. And I don't know. Next slide.
No.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
So what's next? You know, as we strategize and plan for next year, you know. Our kids, many of our kids have both more advanced palettes than we do these days. So Global Eats is one of our new concepts. It's focused, it's for focus countries, Italy, Mexico, India. And China. So we've launched this in a couple of districts. There's a whole program that goes with it, this passport that they can utilize. That, that shows that they participated and tried the different foods based on the different countries. So we're really looking, excited about launching this in Wilton next year at the high school level and middle school levels. Mood Boost, again, we spoke of that program. So we really want to get those monthly events going, rotating. Through Miller Driscoll and Cider Mill. I know we've connected with Kathy about planning for this next year at Miller Driscoll. And so, yeah, really, really putting a lot of focus again on the education and connecting the students to, to the nutritious piece of it.
Just wanted to talk quickly. Just wanted to talk quickly about continuing sustainability partnerships throughout the district. I know that when I came in here, there were a lot of initiatives that were kind of put in the back burner. And I'm glad to see that Amy Sword, who I'm working with now. They bringing a lot of that back and working with her to get that front and center and, you know, and starting those initiatives again. So, you know, some of those initiatives were listed there, but I'm really excited that, you know, Tammy's, you know. Kind of by my side to get those initiatives going again. It's been a few years since. They've been first started, yeah, pre-COVID, so.
And then in addition, just communication, just utilizing the website. I know the website's been updated. We have a spot there. And just using that as a source of communication with the monthly newsletter, just getting the information out there. And, and coordinating some school specific cafeteria advisory boards. You know, getting participation from the students, feedback, parents as well, faculty. We run these at least quarterly in other districts. But it's definitely a way to keep everyone up to speed and obviously to incorporate some of that feedback. And then we'd love to come back here and do a quarterly presentation here at the board.
You had to bring some food or the chef with you. Thanks.
Of, of course, of course.
Smoothies. Yeah, I, you don't mind. I just wanted to share with the board again. I was speaking with the board earlier this evening and then shared with them. You know, we'd had a couple of meetings with Chart Wells, with Tammy, with some others, just to really. Kind of look at the program and reset. And, you know, Bill has been a tremendous asset since he started. He's been with us just over a year now and really. Helped get the cafeterias back on solid footing. It's been really great to see the participation grow. I think there was a lot of energy coming out of the last conversation we had about a week ago, thinking about some of the new opportunities we can. Collaborate around trying to invite more involvement with parents, really, you know, paying attention to nutrition and options. And, you know, some of their chart wells, pre standing programs fit in nicely to some of the conversations we had. So. I think it's going to be a really productive partnership looking forward and. The more we can do to solicit feedback from our kids and, you know, create that loop. So they're constantly telling you, you know, what they're enjoying and what they're not, the, the better we'll get. But, you know, Bill's been, you know, really terrific, terrific for us. And so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Quick question. What's the best route line of communication if parents wanted to reach out? Like who would?
Directly to me.
Okay.
And there's a lot of information on Wilton's website.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a little bit easier to utilize or it's hard to navigate while working on trying to streamline that. On the center, you know, maybe adding a link to like that. So they have some information on who can contact myself or anyone. They have a question.
Awesome.
But the information is there. I just kind of navigate right now.
And then my second question, how is breakfast going in Middlebrook?
Phenomenal.
Oh, good.
Yes, we ran a program last week, very successful. Joy was very much on board with it. He's, he's accepting of it. We're going to continue to do that to the end of this year and then evolve. We're going to enhance that program and build upon it.
Great.
And great.
Great.
No, thank you very much. I think this is like our first full year back in kind of getting back on track. I think. The schools, and I know that with the littler kids and with parents, like I think they're also really looking forward to having the opportunity to kind of. Collaborate a little bit with you around snack choices and, and other, you know, not main course kind of places. And I just, the fact that you're engaging them and also taking a global perspective. Bringing all that. I, I have a kindergartner who has probably tried more foods this year than, you know, I could ever get him to try on his own. So I think it's really fabulous.
That's, I like to hear that. That's exactly what I like to hear. Thank you. Any questions?
What is it? There's someone who hasn't had a kid in elementary school for eight years. What's the, what are the main differences now on the National Lunch Program? Is there less, there used to be a lot of vegetable waste. Was the amount of food waste declined?
What's interesting, you bring that up around the waste because it, it, just looking at like some of the, some of our costs, when I showed that bar graph. And I was like digging into like less students. More variety, but more variety based on what they, what they like, you know, so. That requirement of the NSOP program says you have to take X amount of veggie, X amount of fruit, so on. They take it just to call it a reimbursable meal, but they don't, they don't always eat it. So, you know, now it's more around that, the effort to create the variety. Still make the fruits and vegetables, vegetables available to them. That's the piece where it's the perception of that they're not available. They are available, but. Can't force them to take it, you know. So we, we come up with creative ways, you know, through this Discovery Kitchen, through the boost piece. You know, as Bill showed, you know, that, that relish he created. You know, to engage them, you know, maybe they'll like it this way versus just the standard. Character, the standard cranberry, you know, so it's, it's really the engagement piece. If they're not seeing that at home, if they're not. Expose a different, you know, variety of foods at home, then that's our piece to, to, to make it a little more exciting.
So it gets even, just get more choice now. My kids are there and here's the meal. Taking it, you know.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, Bill can speak to that.
I like to think of our food program, as they graduate through the session of the schools, they're graduating with their food and their palate. So again, you know, it's Miller Driscoll, they're K through two. They're very limited on what they like. And as they get to the next level, we, we scale on that by offering more variety. And we always encourage, we always have our staff encourage the kids to take a fruit and a vegetable. And remind them that that's part of the meal so that they're not always just, you know, taking the lunch and leaving. So we have that as well. And then when we get to Middlebrook and the high school, there, there is still a lot of variety to offer with fresh fruits and vegetables. Front and center, right when they check out, rather than grabbing that snack they really want. And the high school, again, you know, we're still offering the fresh fruits and vegetables, but. Obviously their, their palates are, are well adjusted in what, what they like and a variety is just endless by school.
But K, any K, K through two, I mean, Miller Driscoll, we're still doing. Two hot options and then a full fun lunch as well. So they do have choices. There's generally a four menu item, a secondary if they don't like that initial hot option, or they can do a fun lunch, which, which is generally a cold meal.
They buy chips in Miller Driscoll?
Um.
No, not, not at Miller Driscoll, cider mill.
Cider mill.
Cider mill is that option. Miller Driscoll is just top corner pretzels, healthier options.
Other questions?
And then Maria.
Well, thanks. Thanks for taking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Coon, you're up.
And we're so excited.
Well, no. All right. We're talking about the mountain school. So I'm going to channel my inner. So I'm presenting for him and then I'm for me. So I'm presenting for him and then I'm for me. All right, so just take a look.
Drop the mic and walk out.
Because we are, we are very excited about our math scores, I do want to say one thing first before we get to the second. Um yesterday I had a faculty meeting that was titled um. Celebrations of all things Miller Driscoll. I really wanted my staff to hear that it's not all about math scores. So I'm not going to give you that presentation because it was about forty minutes long. But it celebrated the parent climate survey data, the student climate survey data. Every single member of my leadership team celebrated their team. Um we celebrated the coaching survey data and we turned. So while this is really exciting, it wouldn't be as exciting if all the other things also were, you know. Excited, so. You know, we like to triangulate, I think we quadrangulated or something, I don't know, there was a lot of data, so. So if you can just take a look, I think there was a lot of growth um over the year. And later on, when we look at the cohort data, you'll see um that especially in kindergarten. These were the highest scores that we've, you know, had at Miller Driscoll in my time being in kindergarten.
I mean, have we.
Usually in kindergarten.
Ninety, but have we ever had a ninety before in any?
I know, that's second grade. But even in kindergarten, usually we end the year, kind of where we were in the winter, so in the past, the trend has been that. Kindergarten in the spring is somewhere in the sixties, first grade in the spring is usually somewhere in the seventies. And second grade is usually somewhere in the eighties, so um. You know, overall, I think the scores are a lot higher than they've been. And yes, when you look at that math in grade two, ending at ninety percent. Kind of incredible, but ready. Out of that ninety percent, seventy three percent of the kids, what about the eighty percent?
Incredible.
That's been crazy. Now, you also have to remember. We take a very different test than everybody else, so the test the little kids take is very different. Than the tests that the kids take from three to eight, so can't compare. And by the time they take it the last time in second grade, they've taken it. Eight times, um so we really should be rocking it, but it really does look at foundational skills and that's been our focus, so. So here are those great charts that Matthew makes that show, you know, again, growth over time, and we like to see the red. Decreasing and the green and yellow increasing. Um there's always a caution when looking at intervention and special services, because over the year. Um which he said he's going to change, Matthew's going to change next year, but he uh they don't account for the change in students. So intervention looks so great, but just remember that if kids don't um. You know, make the growth expected in intervention, then we usually put them into the special education process and oftentimes they qualify. So we're still really proud of our special number, so that's K two day. First, um do we have, is it all reading first, okay, good. And then grade one reading. So look at that, look at interventions. Right, isn't that so exciting?
It really is.
Okay. When it comes to data, but it's very exciting. Um again, same thing, second grade, um we are looking at, again, the special education piece. But of course, as the texts get longer, um you know, you not only need your decoding and your fluency, but you need stamina to be able to comprehend. Um so that gets a little trickier in second grade, but overall, we think the numbers are, are again headed in the right direction. So here's math, in kindergarten, we don't have formal intervention in kindergarten, we really have one math intervention. With no data for that, but overall, again, when you look at all the students and even the students just in general, Ed, it's amazing, bro. For these little kids. Were four and five and six taking this test. Right? There's grade one, math. Look at that intervention. I'm just gonna say her name, it's Carol Maxwell, she's our one lone math interventionist. Um so with reading, we have a lot of reading interventionists who again work really hard and work as a team, but. Those math intervention numbers are, you know. Credit it to Carol, that's one, same with second grade. So again. We're really proud of our scores, I'm sure you want to know how we did it. Um so here's the cohort data, so again, you can see over time. The growth of the kids. We really think we've done some pretty good recovery since, you know, the pandemic. The ninety is amazing, remember at the budget workshop where I was like, please, please, please let me accelerate my illustrious math uh implementation? You know, but just saying.
So that class though, that second grade class has always been a strong, i- is it? Like, what's the magic?
Well, if you look at them, right, they were sixty four percent in kindergarten, remember how I said, usually K, it's like around sixties. And then sixty nine in first grade, and then they went up to ninety. That's a big, that's a big, big jump.
Yeah, this second grade class, this whole year they had IM?
They did.
Mm-hmm. And did they have any last year from first grade?
Um there were a group of teachers um who piloted a couple of the units. And they all piloted um one unit at the end of the year, what we did this year in first grade.
Okay.
Um and kinder first grade piloted a unit and then they loved it so much, and then they also did the measurement unit, which was, I think, after the test though. And um kindergarten has already started piloting some of the centers, so. They're very excited.
Yeah, so can I take a minute and just talk about process, so?
So um well, just to, you know, a couple of other highlights, foundational skills we're really proud of, so at kindergarten and first grade. When you look at the ELA scores, right, they're broken out into four different strands. We we have worked a lot in changing the reading program since I've been at Miller Driscoll. Um to focus on those foundational skills. And kindergarten was at eighty two percent with foundational skills and grade one was at eighty three percent. Um kindergarten also was at eighty one percent in math on the operations and algebraic thinking strand. Trudy was here, she'd be dancing up and down, it was like a very important strand when it comes to the thinking about. Um math, and I already told you about the good news about second grade. So again, just remember, it's a very different test. Um it still adapts, um kindergartners still get some things that we just go, wow, really? Like there were some kindergartners who got some multiplication, um there were some kindergartners who got uh two passages. Um story one and story two, and it was, and it didn't read it to them. Um and then the question was, you know, what's the same about this story, and then multiple choice questions. Um I tried to like say to the teachers, if the kids are getting them, that means they're doing really well, because the test gets harder. Um but I will say it's a little distressing for the kids, because they do. Really want to do well, they really do, and some of them get, you know, get a little bit stressed out, take. Take a little too much time, so sometimes like, it's okay to not know, you could, you can keep going. Um I think the biggest thing that we do, which is just like they do at Cider Mill, and actually we learned how to do I E Ts from Cider Mill. But our teachers are incredibly collaborative working in I E Ts. And this year, they um they set their goals, so their professional goals by I E T. Which is kind of great, because then they would collaborate around, you know, what they were doing, and even when they had their scores. You know, they were looking at scores, they were looking at student work, um and they set those goals. So we're actually going to have even some end of year meetings as I E Ts, so they can celebrate together.
Awesome.
Um and then there's coaching, which I love coaching, and I have. Always do invested more staff in coaching than intervention, because I think it's important. To improve tier one as much as possible, and we do that through the coaching, so we do have intervention. But we have had more coaching in the, you know, up until now, but till probably starting next year. Um we've had more coaching than had intervention, and I think it pays off, because you know, you do it with the classroom, if you, you know. Train the classroom teachers, then everybody's getting the benefit of that instruction. And then I will say again, shout out to our interventionists, so for those kids who need a little extra, our interventionists are highly trained. Um in both reading and math, and they work really hard, kids and meet their needs, so it takes a village and. Um you know, a lot of support, and again, not just map scores, but all those other things kind of coming together, so big celebration.
We talked about play workshop for a second, because you just made a connection.
I did, I forgot, so we also on Monday and Tuesday, we oriented two hundred and fifty. Tiny preschoolers um that came to kindergarten orientation, and so I shared. This is my shtick at the beginning, sorry, Kevin, you can hear it again, here's a recap of the last seven years that I've been principal. Instruction, construction, instruction, COVID, COVID, COVID. Um and then I said this year, we implemented Play Workshop, and we actually got the highest scores we've ever had in kindergarten, and. I don't think it's an accident, so no, I'll leave you with that, thanks for reminding me.
I just love what's going, I I have, it's beyond the board, I have a kindergartner and I just. Love what's going on with Play Workshop, and I just think. What it's doing and having a kindergarten, having a recent kindergarten that didn't have Play Workshop. Um I just see the way he talks about things and makes connections. To things and um tells me about what he did in Play Workshop. And what him and his friends talked about and what they learned, and I see him, you know, taking those skills to. Other things to play dates and um connecting it to other stories when we're reading books and just the language. That he's using, and I think that there's something about. Kind of almost like a safe place for them to try their skills, to like, to actively, you know, hone them. Um in a constructive manner, but it doesn't feel kind of like forced or heavy, because they're playing. I would, yeah, but I would love to see that type of, those elements, you know, carry through, you know. In in ways as they get older throughout um. The program, you know, how, what's the play workshop version, what's that? What does that look like for a first grader, what does that look like for a second grader, or even especially with some of our kids that are struggling from, you know. COVID um S L and isolation, those types of developmental. Difficulty, it's like, what does that even look for a third grader or a fourth grader, like how? Um can those, those ideas be um implemented? But I think it's, it's been really tremendous.
Yeah, and while the other grades don't do play workshop, have that time set aside, they do utilize purposeful play. And they do, you know, lots of playful things within their instruction, and the things they do with partnerships and. You know, again, even the centers for illustrative math and then, you know, the games the kids play together, it's, you know. It's a lot of really good interaction, and it fosters that oral language, which is a, you know, that's a big part of what we do in our school. Kind of the basis for everything else that you're, you're going to learn, so. Thanks for letting me celebrate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for letting us celebrate with you.
Yeah, pretty great.
Um Brian and Parent Square, yes. Well, thank you for having me um tonight, um this time of year is typically. When if there are new technologies and new systems, we begin um, you know. Uh resourcing them and and setting them up, and this year we have um this particular system, which. Is um something that actually happened um as. Something that was, you know, kind of given to us in a sense, because um. Earlier in the year, after we'd gone to a brand new website um with Gabbert, you may all recall that that was. Um we had gone from final site and we moved over to Gabbert, we have a a new website as of um the beginning of this school year. Um this wonderful little company that we had, you know, um gone with and were um so committed to. Um was bought out, so it was acquired by a company called Parent Square. Parent Square is a comprehensive communication tool. Um and has lots of different um parts of it that I'm going to go into in a in a minute. Uh but they didn't have a website, so that was actually their interest in um acquiring Gabbert. So at this point, Parent Square is our website, but we also, um as a result of the acquisition. Have it to do lots more, so I'm going to go into um it kind of a step by step. Uh do um a little bit so that you can see what it will look like and how we're actually going to um. Uh you know, deploy it to all the parents and implement it. And um then actually go into how this is going to support um a much bigger goal in terms of communication. So um on to the next slide, um this is a couple of minutes, but it's worth actually seeing, because it it'll give you, it's a little video. It'll give you kind of like an overview of Parent Square as this platform that really um is going to try to actually put a lot of different. Tools um in one place, so just, can you play that?
Thanks for visiting Parent Square, our goal is to help you streamline your communication and parent engagement effort across your schools. Parent Square unifies communication for all stakeholders and is one hundred percent parent centric. That means that everyone is using the same platform, including teachers, principals, staff, admin, even the superintendent. Here, we're talking in as a principal at Lincoln Elementary School. As an admin in Parent Square, I know exactly what's going on at my school and have full access and insight into all schools of home communication. I can also send out messages to the entire school or can send to specific grade levels, classrooms or groups. We integrate that sync on a nightly basis with your student information system to ensure accurate reach at all times. And minimal effort for all users to get started, there are three main ways to communicate in Parent Square. Alerts and notifications, posts and private chats, let's start by sending out an emergency alert from the app. Traditional one-way alerts and emergency notifications deliver as phone calls, emails, texts or app notifications. You can also send alerts from the web portal. The second way to communicate in Parent Square is via posts. Sending posts are for day-to-day communication, used by teachers for their classroom communication and administrators for school. Or district-wide communication, a teacher has access to send messages to their classroom, grade level and select groups only. And roles to be restricted even further, posts include plenty of different features such as photos and files, links and item requests. If you're sharing an event, you can quickly add it to your event calendar, which syncs with your existing calendars, you can also request R S V Ps. Ask for a few volunteers, or even set up online payments. You can also send forms electronically through Parent Square, paper permission slips often end up lost at the bottom of students' backpacks. Ensure your important forms are delivered directly to parents by having a digital form with optional electronic signature to your post. You can also send out newsletters with our newsletter template option, we build everything in-house. So the look and feel will remain the same, whether you use one or all of our items. The post will reach parents via email, text or app notification, depending on their preference. The third main way to communicate in Parent Square is via private chats, one-to-one or one-to-many. Parents can also initiate these private chats if they want to reach their child's teacher, and all communication is done via the private portal or app. Now that everyone at your school or district is using the same communication platform, we can gather statistics for you. And help measure not only reach and delivery, but also parent engagement and usage. Also, admin's can assign different roles with restricted access, so you know with confidence that your staff are communicating with the right group. Class and grade level at all times, a district account will have super user access available to communicate district-wide alerts and announcements. As well as insight and access to all certain communication, including private chats. As you can see, there's no need to go outside of Parent Square for any of your communication and parent engagement needs. All features are available at Lincoln Elementary, but you can start with as few or as many of our features as you like, since we offer three different packages. I hope you enjoyed learning more about Parent Square, I look forward to discussing how we can help engage their school community.
So exciting, right? Love those kind of things, but um so, I mean, if if you kind of. So exciting, right? Love those kind of things. But um, so I mean, if if you kind of followed all that. It is a very deep tool. It has a lot of different elements to it. Um, and as you all know, we use School Messenger right now. School Messenger, um, this is going to replace it as of um July first. Um, and what um, one of the big differences, I like to say, is that if if you kind of look at what we're doing with School Messenger right now. There's a limited number of licenses that we actually have through that. Um, what you probably noticed is that Parent Square. Depending on how we roll it out and what we want to do, has unlimited number of licenses. So it's one package that. Um, not only could we expand who uses it at each school admins and it's, you know, executive assistants. But um, we can add to that um students, for example, we are gonna replace Remind, which is currently being used at the high school as a. Text-based uh system. Um, this will do that for students as well. Um, and as you probably also noticed, it actually will in the future, as we kind of, you know, think about and really. Do this in a purposeful way can um provide teachers and other leaders the ability to communicate. Um, all under one place. Um, the uh communication is done in all of these different ways. I just wanted you to see it all on one page in terms of text, email, push notifications, uh the voice polls. Um, we're able to integrate with social media, our website, and I'll show you that in a little bit. Um, you can either use the web portal, so you can go onto your, you know, laptop and go to the Parent Square site. Or you can have an app. There's a Parent Square app um that you can download on your phone and and use that in a mobile um app. Um, on the next page, um, you start seeing what it actually looks like. And um that particular um image of the Lincoln Elementary School that they were referring to. If you kind of look at it, there's a feed in the middle, right? Those are all the posts that are coming from either the school, the district, they're all combined in one. If we were to get like. Club leaders or athletics, et cetera, they would all be kind of feeding in there. And then on the side, you have a navigation where, you know, you can go and look at your posts, you can look at your images, there's a place for. Um, links um and a few other things. And on the right-hand side, it populates. The key information from those posts such as events in a calendar. Um, if we're sending something out, it has a a form, for example, we can send out permission slips. It'll populate that form on the side as well. Um, so what does that look like? Those of you who are on either Facebook or, you know, Instagram probably looks mostly like this. It will be very um familiar to those that um are used to using um social media. So onto the next one. Uh, like I said, there is a student square, so there's parent square and there's student square. And uh students, we will actually roll this out at the high school specifically because. We are replacing the use of Remind at at that level. Um, and there's, you know, lots of different also um ways that this can be used with students.
Gaggle beyond this. I'm sorry, like will gaggle watch this like?
Uh, no, this is, this is really a closed environment. I always look like to call these systems. This is a particular wall garden, so it's it's teachers communicating directly or it's a club. Yeah, it's it's different. Yeah. Um, and like I said, one of the things that really attracted us to this is if you think about a. A bigger communication strategy, one of the issues that we have is that we may send it out through one channel. But then it has to be recreated for a second and third, et cetera. So if you're trying to actually um get the word out about something. You post it on the website, you send it out through School Messenger, you recreate it for Twitter. You may have a Facebook, you send it out to the PTA and put it on, you know, goes on and on and on, right? So um, when you actually create a post in Parent Square, there's a button, you can directly. Share it to the website, it'll go into the newsfeed and it'll go right on the homepage. Um, it also has a way that you can do that with Twitter and Facebook as well. Um, which if you start thinking about all of the places that you get information. Um, you know, there's an information overload and it would be very nice if we try to, you know, strategically do that. Um, the other thing that is a little bit different and we will uh make use of this as time goes on and we get used to the. Platform is that it's interactive. It provides things like forms and permission slips. Um, it provides an opportunity to send something out and ask for volunteers and uh, you know. Parents will be able to say, yes, I can volunteer and I can volunteer at such and such a time for this particular event. Um, so there's. More that will be available where the parents can be engaged and we can measure that engagement, which is also really important.
For payments, is there a fee for payments? Like, can this replace um what's our payment system?
Yeah, they're they're, they were beta testing that when we spoke to them about it. So um, yeah, we don't love our current.
The school bucks.
Yeah, the My School Bucks, you know, I don't like the the per transaction fee. Um.
Yeah.
You know, we don't tickets, pickets, another one, we just don't love. So um, so that was when we.
There is a feature in it now that they have rolled out since we talked to, we talked to the the um CEO uh back in March. Um, when, you know, we were making the decision in terms of this really fit our needs. Um, they didn't have that particular um feature module in place and they do now, but we're gonna need to look at it and compare it. But like I said, there's a lot of things that we can actually um. Basically build up as we're going along. So that might be one to take a look at. Um, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about is how many different tools that we have. And is there a way that we can streamline, right?
Like sports U and like, I mean, all of these different.
Yeah, and every single one of those is coming in, whether it's to the parent or even directly to the student. And they're coming from a different direction and it makes it so that um, in a sense, the communication is great that we do so much of it. But at the same time, it gets diluted because we do so much of it.
I just worry who like controls the mothership because I feel like this gets in the hand of like, next thing you know, you're getting like.
Yes.
Tons of messages from everyone who wants to.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's, that's, that's a really good point. The way that we're approaching it right now is that next week, we're actually beginning all the training with all the folks that currently are in School Messenger. So we have. Um, key folks at each of the schools, we have central office folks. That um are typically the ones that will send out School Messenger blasts. Um, we've done a um a training with the webmasters because it's really important that they actually. Um, integrate the web with this as well, and then we will do the same with the tech I Ls. That's gonna be our starting point. And then I'll talk a little bit more about it, but we have now that Communication Task Force. That we're really excited about that is going to be able to set the standard operating procedures and some of the guidelines in terms of how to do that. Because that is a really good point. Um, I just wanted to have like a one page where you can see all of the different. Features that are possible, the integration, the fact that you can create a newsletter as a template and then just reuse that. You know, it makes it really easy. Um, I know all the schools have their own newsletters and it would make this a little bit easier to go through. I love the idea of you send out a newsletter at the school level and there's a, there's a button that you put on and it goes right onto the website as well. So. Um, that's great. Also, um, the communication um is automatically translated into a hundred plus languages. And um, the user can select the their language. So that makes it um really much more accessible. Um, you know, we talked about the the forums, the different permission slips, the appointments. Um, it's possible to set up, you know, conferencing, you know, in. Uh, parent teacher conferences and actually go in and and sign up. They they have signups. Um, we talked about the fact that we've now integrated this with our uh Power School, our student information system. And that's really important because we'd like to have all of the information go through one place, which is Power School. Feeding this and keeping all of the information up to date. Um, and their analytics. Um, which is really important is great. You get a dashboard, you can look at engagement, you can look at each post. Um, and see what the reach is. So once we start actually um doing the work of the Communication Task Force and. You know, looking at what data we should look at in terms of engagement, this is gonna be a really great tool for us.
And who owns the data?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, they're absolutely on on board with our data.
Okay.
Probably uh student, yeah, yeah. Um, so in terms of the Parent Square for parents. Um, it's really a very, it's it's not something that we need to do like trainings for, it's very easy. Um, I've already kind of tested the waters and sent one um, one post out. And I think that most people just received it, went in, signed in and have reported back that they they were in it. Um, like I said, you can choose to be on the app, so you'd have to download the Parent Square app. Or be on the web um and use the web portal. Um, there is, and right now, if any parent is getting a post, it's. There's a, there's a default in terms of, you know, how they're receiving uh the information. Um, it's probably defaulting to something called digest, which means that all the posts from the day. Whether it's coming from the school, the district or other um places comes into one digest and comes in. At like a six, six thirty at night, um, and it's in that one format. Um, you can choose to get it immediate. Um, you can also choose choose to get or not get email, get or not get text. So you can choose the modality. You can choose how it comes to you. Um, we as the district though can um with urgent alerts. Override all of that so that we, if we have to send something out urgently, we can send it out.
So you can force everyone to get a phone call.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and um, I don't know if um you're able to go into that login just to show them what it looks like, but.
Kevin, if that's taking over like the phone system for snow days and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it'll um, so beginning next year, it'll replace anything we would do with School Messenger.
So you don't have to add, like, if I'm a parent and I haven't downloaded the app, how do we work around that?
Why don't you just call your phone, if the phone rings in there?
Yeah, everything is in there and you can't really opt out of getting it. So.
If I never download the app.
If that's the only way that you're getting it, you still can get it on the web and you'll still get the, you'll still get the voice and the text. Yeah. Um, if you go into just the 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 link, this is the the dashboard. So if you're going in as an admin, all of the principals. Everybody will be able to go in, they'll be able to see what posts have been sent out from the school, from anyone there. Um, what the reach has been. So it it starts off with this very nice, you know. Um, way of looking at it. On the left-hand side, if you actually just go to Parent Square, I believe it is. Yeah, it's not going there. No.
No.
Um. It may be, it's kind of weird. So we're, we're kind of, you're gonna go into yours at this point, yeah. Uh, all right, let's just keep on going. Um, the the login, when you first go in. And you go to parentsquare.com, um, it will give you a single sign-on. So you can actually go to the Google. Um, and just automatically go in. Um, it it really is very, very simple. Um, so it, you keep on going to the next slide. Um, this is just for your information in terms of how we're rolling this out. Um, we're right now at this point. Um, in the point we've, we've configured it, we're beginning to train key personnel, the district at the school, like I said, that's next week. Um, and then we are kicking it off. Uh, obviously, we're kicking it off tonight with this meeting. But we'll be able to send something to parents saying that we're, we're making this transition and to get them ready in June so that by July. We can roll over since we're not renewing, School Messenger will need to use this entirely. Um, the official deployment will be for the beginning of the school year, obviously, but in the meantime, we're getting ourselves ready to get there. So I'm gonna make a segue. So you understand Parent Square, it's easy and it's robust. Um, and it will support the work that we're gonna talk about. Uh, so um. On April sixth, you approved a new task force, the Communication Task Force. We're really very excited about it. Um, I have to begin by thanking Nicola, who has been a real champion of this. Um, and um, all of the people that now are, have become part of this. So we had our first meeting this past week. On Tuesday and it was, um, there's Kevin at the first meeting. Uh, I always take lots of pictures on every event, so this was an opportunity to do the same. Um, so we basically had a, an introductory launch, a kickoff meeting. Um, where we talked about what our goals were, we had those goals. Um, we talked about those goals. Um, when we actually presented the task force on the next slide, there's a real um. General um of what the goals are. Essentially, the um task force is going to be creating a comprehensive. Communication plan for Walton Public Schools. I liken this to what we do with our curriculum reviews and our program reviews. Where we're doing an extensive amount of um, you know, data collection, whether it be with surveys or. Uh, looking at trends, looking at the research, looking at national standards. Um, and then taking that information and building with that. Um, a plan um and recommendations. We are um looking to increase engagement, obviously, and having a real clear way that we're communicating. Um, and then to establish um procedures and guidance. We're not a big um district. In which case you have like a, an entire communications department. And because we're a smaller district. You absolutely need that clarity of procedures, guidance, recommendations um in terms of how we communicate. And if you go to the next slide, um, we basically had a um great meeting. We went and we actually um. In a sense, introduced not only the goals, but we began talking about what are our strengths, we. And our opportunities and threats. We did a little SWOT analysis so that everybody in the group could. In in a sense, begin talking about um how they felt about communication. And um, that segued into our conversation about what we needed to do, which was survey the community. Look at those research trends, conduct focus groups, because oftentimes, talking to people is different than, you know, sending them a survey. And then we are um establishing subcommittees um for very specific areas. Um, the areas that we're focusing on is um, one, that idea of looking at all our digital tools and streamlining. And making it very clear in terms of what is gonna be used um for what kind of communication. Um, the second is a um parent feedback in terms of how we um. Have school home communications, um, parent conferences, lots of things came up during that conversation. And the third is actually something that we absolutely need, which is, we do a lot of great things in this district. We just sat here this entire night and I could count like many things. That um this district from the superintendent's report, from the board, board chairs report, from, you know, the folks that. Um, actually presented here, how many different stories did we just talk about tonight, right? We really need a way that we can get that out. Uh, it's a public. Um, and media relations campaign, a way to brand ourselves, a way of getting the um information out. Um, and so our task is going to be to develop. Um, those tools that plan the recommendations by next March. We have um a set way. So. Um, with that, we do have um specific dates and I, um, you know, I'd also invite Nicola or. Um, Kevin to um also comment on the first meeting.
It was a great start. We um think the SWOT analysis was. I I think it needs a bit more time and a few more constituents weighing in. So. To share the presentation, the the SWOT that we've got so far with anyone who's interested. Um, and and. Moving on, Blackberry, gonna do some work designing. Um, a survey over the summer with YouTube, reporting that into the next meeting of the task force, which will be in September. Can get the survey, solicit some focus group participants. For the, you know, launch should, mention that will be the start next full year.
How many people sit in the committee?
There's about, um, well, there're about fifteen that came. There's a few that could not make it, so we'll probably have about twenty. Um, but, you know, again, we have stakeholders that are, you know, our administrators, teachers, parents. Um, we have the entire community and we're gonna add a few students in the fall as well. So. It's, it's a good group. It's a very good group.
I think my only ask would be to really hit hard, parent. I feel like they're the ones that, I don't wanna say anything else, but they're the ones that struggle the most. Communication and how it's delivered and what they're missing. Um, and you know, they're planning in both, maybe, but have opinions about it. So, I know, we can tackle that, but. We have our support.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, yes.
This is the hill I've got to dial.
You know, that's quite the statement. Any other questions for Fran or Nicola?
No, it's a huge job. It's exciting that you guys are taking it on.
Yeah.